Oh, I don't know if I let them know yet.
Your staff is doing this.
Good evening, Farmington Hills. Welcome to our regulars council session of tonight, the 24th of January. I can't believe January is flying by so quickly, but it is. And as we gather tonight, we will start, as we always do, with, as soon as I get it up here, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
No. I'm waiting for my chance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next is the roll call.
Mayor Barnett, here. Councilmembers Boloware, here. Bridges.
Here.
Bruce.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
And Newland.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, next is the approval of the agenda. I understand we have some amendments?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add Consent Item Number 11, recommend approval of a continuing employment of two police officers per Section 10.01A of the City Code. And the Second Amendment is to the appointments for someone for seven cog.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Newland, seconded by Councilmember Boloware. Is this a regular vote?
Regular vote.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the agenda is amended. Next is, Sue Arlen is not here tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we will go on to correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence they wish to report?
I do have one.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this is actually a question, I think, for the city manager as well. I received an email late this afternoon from a Mr. Champeau, and he was asking whether or not, well, apparently he and his wife and their subdivision HOA is, they have some challenges with geese, and they are using, or they're looking at a goose, I guess it's called goose chasers. Basically, it's border collies that chase the geese, and by harassing them, make them leave. And he just wanted to know if the city does any of these services, or if that would be of any interest and to other HOAs. And my response to him was that I have no idea, but I would be seeing the city manager and council tonight. I would raise the question, and that likely, he did ask about my community, my sub.
DNR does a goose.
But we don't have a challenge with that, because we don't have any large, open areas. We have more trees. And that would generally be something you see in larger, open areas. So I just thought I would ask. I didn't think we used anything like that. And if it was, the only thing that would be amenable would be the golf course, but dogs running around on golfers is not going to be particularly good idea. So that was the correspondence. I just wanted to share that with council.
Anyone else? I believe we all received several emails from Jason Fleck, which will come up during the PUD public comment. And I also received an email from a woman who has a failing septic field. And I passed that on to our city manager and to our Public Services Director to see what we can do if there's a hardship to help her out, or maybe there's more extensive damage in that area, and other septic fields are also failing. So I'm concerned about that. So we will check back on that and wait for a report. Next item is Consent Agenda. It will be read by Mayor Pro Tem Mary Newland. And all agenda items on the Consent Agenda are considered routine by City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the Consent Agenda for consideration.
The Consent Agenda is published. Number six, recommended approval of extension of agreement for 2022 Spring/Summer Citywide Planting Program with Krimbuli Nursery Inc. in the amount of 70,000. It's the CMR 1-22-07. Number seven, recommend approval of establishing the Normandy Hills Water Main Payback District. This is CMR 12208. Number eight, acknowledgment of the city's second quarter financial summary report and investment report. Number nine, recommend approval of the city council study session mini minutes of January 10th, 2022. Number 10, recommend approval of the city council regular session mini minutes of January 10th, 2022. And now number 11, which is recommend approval of continuing employment of two police officers per Section 10.01A of the City Code.
Due to marriage, we shall not stand in the way. Yes, yes.
I make a motion that we approve. I make a motion that we approve Consent Agenda Items 6 through 8 and 11 through 12.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Boloware, seconded by Councilmember Bridges. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Bruce.
Yes.
Boloware.
Yes.
Bridges.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Mayor Barnett.
Yes. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move approval of Items 9 and 10, as read by the Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Noel. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Boloware.
Abstain.
Bridges.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett.
Yes. And that brings us to council member comments and announcements. Does anybody have any comments or announcements to make? Mr. Bridges, and then Ms. Boloware?
Public question, comment, that before this?
I said, "Public questions and comments."
That turned around a little bit? See if that's a public question.
Oh, public questions and comments. You are correct. I skipped over that.
No problem.
Anybody who would like to come up and address us for up to five minutes on any item of business that is not on tonight's agenda is now asked to come forward and do so.
Good evening. My name's Mike Clarahan. I live kitty-corner from here, over off of Springfield and Springbrook subdivision there. I'm wondering what's being done about our four-legged vandals, the ones that eat all my flowers, to a point where I've spent hundreds of dollars on what they call blood meal to keep the deer away. Now they're eating my evergreens.
Your evergreens?
So I have my evergreens covered in netting, which I may have to in the summer as well. I'm wondering what's the point in doing beautification projects throughout the city if the deer are just going to vandalize it all?
Well, we have a man that can address that right now, Mr. Valentine, who is our Assistant City Manager. Is he here?
He's here, I believe he's tied up. But I can elaborate. So, Mr. Clarahan, is that your name?
Clarahan.
Clarahan, I'm sorry. So I'm not sure if you've been watching council meetings, but over the course of the last six months or so, Farmington Hills has taken the lead to take the reins on a regional deer management effort. We've had open houses. One of them was held last late summer, early fall over at the Hawk. We had many, many people show up with the same concerns and same issues as you have. And the long and the short of it is, is we are trying in earnest to develop a regional plan with other communities here in southeastern Oakland County. The last meeting we had included representatives from Oakland County itself, in really an effort to try to get the DNR and the state involved in managing this urban deer herd that we have. It is, it is an issue, just not for Farmington Hills. It's an issue in West Bloomfield, and Southfield, and Rochester Hills. You name it, they have an urban deer problem. And so we're working very diligently. And we understand that the residents are short on patience when it comes to this issue, but we're really trying to find a regional solution.
Two nights ago, I had 10 deer in my backyard.
Thank you.
We're trying to work with the Department of Natural Resources as well to come up with some options that they will allow us to use. And hopefully, in the next few months, we'll have, be able to report back to you and all the other residents that are very concerned about the overpopulation. They're beautiful animals, but they are mischievous, yes. They like to eat expensive plants.
Arbivides.
Yeah.
And they don't come back. They eat, they look like lollipops, the bottom, and that's never going to grow back.
Yeah, so.
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
Lot of order there, I apologize.
No, no, that's, that's fine. We're a little less formal tonight, because it's the end of January. Don't know where the month went. Anybody else wish to address us? Okay, hopefully, we can get you an answer sooner rather than later, and invite you to attend a, a meeting where we'll present some solutions. Next item is council member comments and announcements. I know Mr. Bridges, and then Ms. Boloware.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Commission on Aging, which I am the city council liaison, is planning a series of programs to help alert our Farmington Hills residents, particularly the elderly residents in our community, senior citizens, about the issue of elder abuse, particularly financial elder abuse and other issues where the elderly is targeted by people that are not in the best interests. So I'll be asking the council to approve a resolution, Madam Mayor, to support that particular efforts there.
Yes.
And it would deal with primarily with elder abuse and all aspects of either financial elder abuse, or being taken advantage of in so many ways.
Right.
And we want to make sure our residents have all the tools they need in order to be educated about all the different preventive tools that are available to help them be not to be a victim of this.
Right.
So I'll be submitting a letter, I mean, a resolution to the city manager's office, hopefully we get the council approval that will help facilitate these programs.
Okay, we will put Ms. Pines on that, for sure, and hopefully have that by our February meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it.
Ms. Boloware?
Yes. We've been having a series of wonderful concerts at the Hawk, and at the next concert date is March 5th, in which we're going to have Black Thorn, which is a group, they're local, really legend, and they're going to be there for a night of Irish music, and it's just before St. Patrick's Day. So if you would like to purchase tickets, they're available online, or you could perhaps go to the Hawk and buy your ticket.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I would like to do a reach out, comment to our public safety who rescued the 11 guinea pigs from, so I would say, no matter how smart residents are, you take care of all of us.
Anyone else?
Okay, well, I want to let everybody know that our city website is updated with a refreshing new look. It's not fully redone, but we're in the process of doing that. In the meantime, we've made it much more user-friendly. And if you visit the city of Farmington Hills website at www.fhgov.com, you'll see a completely updated look with many new features. The redesigned website will officially go live at the city council meeting on January 24th. Following several months of work by our special internal website committee, composed of representatives from every city department, the existing website, designed in 2015, needed a new look, also needed to be a lot more user-friendly, with a refreshed layout and greater functionality on cellphones and tablets. The website committee reviewed several design concepts and incorporated many new features, including sticky buttons, call-out boxes, and latest news carousel, a main page calendar, and department pages with streamlined information. The city's website committee met regularly to update and customize the design, submit new photos, and provide feedback on how to make the website more attractive and much easier to navigate. So please, join us at www.fhgov.com and check out the newly refreshed website, and feel free to send in your comments as well. We'll also be adding a form there, if you want to be appointed to any of our boards and commissions, that you could just fill out online. We'd love to have new people involved in the process. We still have several openings on some of our boards and commissions, and that information will be available on the website as well. So we look forward to your continued participation and citizenship in our great community. Next item is the city manager's comments and announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. So just one quick comment. Winter tax bills are due, so they are payable now through Monday, February 14th, without penalty. We'd like to remind residents, you know, due to COVID concerns, we're encouraging residents to take advantage of our low and no-cost options for online payments. But of course, we are open to the public, and do take in-person payments as well as have Dropbox service if you wish to pay by check. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is a public hearing. The public hearing and consideration of a planned unit development Plan 4 2021 located on the south side of Northwestern Highway between Greening Street and Highview Avenue. Mr. Gardner?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm trying to get this thing set up here. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight is a PUD Plan 4 2021, which is a request to develop approximately six-acre site, which includes a four-story, 250-unit apartment, luxury apartment building with a parking deck attached to it, and a separate three-story, 66-unit building. The proponent is Farmington Hills Lofts LLC. The location of this proposed development is on the south side of Northwestern Highway between Greening and Highview. The zoning for the property is a mixture of zoning from, anywhere from B3 general business to RA4, single-family, P1, and office service district. The master plan for the area is for multiple-family residential, and a special planning area also is an overlay for that. The Planning Commission did review this plan at their December 16th, 2021 meeting, and they recommended to city council approval of the plan. Following my brief comments, the proponent should come before you and present their plan. Following their presentation, your planning consultant, Mr. Roder Royal, will give you his land use analysis of the proposal. This is a public hearing, so you would require opening up and taking public comment. I know we got some email comments that we forwarded to the council. And after that, your deliberation and questions, we'll be happy to take care of them. So with that, I would ask the proponent to come in, and I'll get yours set up here in a second, if I can. Which one do you want?
On the left.
This one?
On the left.
Oops, my other left.
Their other left.
All right. Perfect.
Before we start, Madam Mayor, our screens have the wrong item on it.
Right.
Can we get that fixed?
Oh, that's a good question. What's wrong?
Nothing with you. Our computer screens up here.
We have screens in front of us that are supposed to mirror what you have up there.
Shouldn't have that on.
It's me. Anytime I get near a monitor, they always get screwed up, so I know it's me.
It's, that way, we don't have to turn our heads to keep looking at it. We, we're supposed to have it up here, but it's not.
The sound is better tonight, though. There we go. Okay.
All good?
Yep.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is John Ackerman. I'm with Atwell, representing the developer tonight, Alden Development Group. Members of Alden are in the, in the crowd with us tonight, along with members of the Langen family, and Jennifer Fritz with Humphreys Architects, the architect on the project. As Ed had talked about, the site is located kind of at the intersection of Orchard Lake Road, Northwestern Highway, and the city. Two major arteries for the city, and that, the, the yellow line is the city boundary. So the site essentially acts as a gateway development coming into the city from West Bloomfield. A majority of the uses adjacent to the site, both on Northwestern and Orchard Lake Road, are a mixture of commercial, business, retail uses. Directly south of the site, there's a wetland complex, some natural, some open natural space, a handful of our single-family residential lots, and then below that is the golf course that fronts on 13 Mile Road. If you zoom into the parcel, it fronts on Northwestern Highway. Along the eastern border of the property is Highview Street, which is a 40-foot right-of-way. It's a gravel road that basically services the handful of residential lots that I mentioned before, south of the property. I have a photo of Highview, you can kind of see on the south, on the bottom right corner here. It's a gravel road. It's, it's, you know, it's not traveled that, that frequently. It's a residential, kind of a calm or tranquil community-type feel. On the east, or, excuse me, on the west side of the property is Greening Street, which is a, also just a gravel, unimproved road right now. Both Highview and Greening Street are in 40-foot right-of-ways. Rexwood and Moulfordton dead-end into Greening Street, and as part of our property, or as part of our improvements to development, Luden will dead-end into Greening as well. And on the bottom-left corner, you can see a photo of Rexwood, which is indicative of the same kind of character of Moulfordton and Luden as well. They're partially paved, they're old, I call them experienced roads. They, they need improvements, and part of this project I'll, I'll talk about is improvements to those roads as well. As, as you heard earlier, I joked at Planning Commission, the site's a mutt as far as it comes to zoning. I mean, it's a little bit of everything on this property, residential, commercial, business, parking. You have all kinds of uses, and it's really difficult to come up with a, with a solution for development of the property that meets all your zoning ordinance requirements, and that's why a PUD makes a lot of sense for development of this property. The future land use plan's a little bit cleaner. The northern portion of the property that fronts on Northwestern is non-center type business, and the majority of the site, about two-thirds of the property is actually, has a future land use designation of multifamily. So when we first came to the city, we've been looking at this project and concepting and having discussions on this since before COVID. When we met with city staff originally over two years ago, we came in with one building with more density than is proposed right now, a lot more aggressive than we're at right now. And took a lot of feedback back from that, from that meeting, and subsequent meetings, a lot of different concept plans, looked at the site, and we're excited that we think the solution to the property makes a lot of sense. I'm not going to get into too much detail about the building, steal Jennifer's thunder, she'll talk a lot about that, but what we, what we wound up doing was breaking this into two different buildings and transitioning from an amassing standpoint. So the, the larger building fronts up on Northwestern Highway, and then you step back into a lower building on the, on the, on the south side of the property. The northern building, we call the loft building. It's a four-story wrap, which is basically, essentially, the units wrap around a four-story parking garage and help mask the parking garage. So from all four sides, you're going to see it, it's going to have a residential feel to it. High-quality architecture throughout this building with all the amenities and everything else. The northern building will offer 250 units, and they range in one to three bedrooms, and we'll talk about a little bit that in a minute. And then there's also a lot of amenities scattered throughout the building, including three courtyards. Two are internal, and one is external. It'll have a pool, clubhouse, fitness center, a lot of other amenities for the residents of the loft building. The southern building is what we call the townhome or the flats building. These are three-story, it's walk-up, only 66 units on the, on the southern building, and they also range in one to three bedrooms. The first floor is covered garages. They will have full use of all the amenities in the loft building. There aren't any amenities in this, this is strictly residential. And we've also proposed a dog park adjacent to the townhome flats that will also front on Greening Street with the improvements we're proposing there. So as I mentioned earlier, the site on the west side, excuse me, on the east side, is adjacent to Highview Street, and on the west side is adjacent to Greening Street. We did kind of a little configuration here, if you can see the improvements that we're proposing for Greening Street. It's kind of a unique development. It's, it's an infill development, and, and the focus, the goal here is to create a, you know, a, a nice, high-quality urban streetscape frontage along the entire west side of this property. And as you can see what we're proposing here, it's, it's, the, the street itself is wide enough for two lanes of travel, one in each direction, and we're proposing parallel parking along the east side of that street. That will be for parking, proposed uses or proposed parking for the building itself. The leasing center, which is up in the north corner, the, the parking will be available for that as well. Adjacent to the parking is a bunch of other amenities associated with a typical streetscape, larger, wider sidewalks, bike racks, landscaping, benches, street lighting, everything to make more of a pedestrian-level friendly atmosphere for, for that street. One other thing, it's, it, like I mentioned, Greening Street is only in a 40-foot right-of-way. In order to do all these improvements, city requirements are 60-foot right-of-way for the city streets. Typically, when you come in and you look at something like that, if you need to improve it, you take 10 feet on both sides. We are, because there isn't the room to do any improvements on the west side of the property, we are offering up all 20 additional feet on our property, taking that off of our development. And that will go as far south as we possibly can go, almost down to Luden Street. The intent is to keep Highview in the 40, 40-foot right-of-way, kind of keep that a secondary access, and focus all of our site access work over on the east side of the, or on the west side of the property. So there's four general parking areas. I know there's been a lot of questions about parking, kind of briefly go through this. So we offer the, the parallel parking I just referred to. There's 23 parallel parking spaces along the west side of the building. There are, there's 71 spaces of surface parking between the two buildings. There's 23 tuck-under garage spaces on the southern building, and the majority of the parking falls into the four-story parking structure, that's 416 spaces. So it's a total of 533 spaces for 316 units. Now, if you look at a breakdown in the buildings themselves, approximately half of these units are going to be one-bedroom units, with another 135 is two-bedroom, and then 26 three-bedroom units, which is a total of 516 bedrooms. So we are north of one car per bedroom, and a total of just about 1.7 spaces per unit. This is under what the city's requirement is for parking. City's requirement is two units per overall, two, two units, two spaces per unit. We are very comfortable with what we're proposing. Humphreys can, can talk a little bit more about that if, if needed. There's been a lot of case studies on this, based on the demographics coming in here. We are comfortable that if they have a one-bedroom unit, they're not going to have two cars. There will be times when, you know, there's guest parking available as well, but as, as a whole, the development team is extremely comfortable with the proposition of 1.7 spaces per unit. Development benefits. The Emerson is, the elevator speeches, the Emerson is a high-quality gateway development that's going to help unify all the various zoning clarifications on this property. It's going to provide a much-needed core residential district that's going to help complement a lot of the struggling resident, or retail and commercial uses up along Northwestern and Orchard Lake Road. It's an infill site. You know, everyone is familiar with what's on the property right now. I think everyone would, would like to see this site developed out, something nice and high-quality such as this. With the proposed development, one of the very first things that we were told by city staff was, do your best to remove any site access out to Northwestern Highway to clean that up. MDOT is going to like that as well. So what we did was, as part of this, there was actually another curb cut in between Highview and Greening Street, and that's been removed as part of this process. I kind of touched on Greening Street improvements already. All of those are going to be proposed as part of this development, which will help create that, kind of that gateway access south of the site and improve site circulation south and west of our property. In addition to the paving and improvements to, to Greening Street, we're also going to pave Rexwood, Moulfordton, and Luden Street. Now, Rexwood and Moulfordton, I mentioned, are partially paved. Luden is all paved, but all three of those are going to be improved. We've had several conversations with your city engineering staff. The level of how we're going to handle it, some of the details still need to be figured out, curbs and that kind of stuff, but we are absolutely. out, curbs and that kind of stuff, but we are absolutely proposing and committing to improvements of all three of those corridors, and that includes extensions of public utilities along each one of those as well. Pedestrian-scale improvements. It's, I realize this is a high-traffic area, but it's, we, we need to encourage walkability. We need to encourage bikeability. We need to bring in bike racks. You need to think outside the box and make sure that you're offering up a lifestyle here that makes sense for anybody that, that's going to be living here. And the target demographics for this are, you know, this, this, this project isn't a, your typical garden-style apartment project. These are high-end, high-quality lofts, and the target demographic is going to be young professionals, millennials in a higher, in a higher, higher-income bracket. Bring in more money, spend more money, help out the city. We prepared this graphic. I know there was some talk about the height of the building. We are, again, four stories. As you can see, the, the blue building is kind of the massing of what we're proposing. The, the front, the front building to us on this screen is the four-story building, and the back goes down to a three-story building. As you can see, directly adjacent and almost right across the street are the four-story hotels. So the massing is not, it's not out of place. It's, it's something that kind of, that, that coincides with some of the massing and the building heights within the area itself.
Thanks, John. I'll just quickly give an overview of the exterior of the building. As John mentioned, the building along Northwestern Highway is our four-story wrap building. You can see the units in the yellowish-orange color. They wrap around multiple courtyards and a parking garage at the rear of the site. In the reddish-pink color at the corner of Greening and Northwestern Highway will be the main building entry. So that's where the main amenities will be located and leasing office. So we located that on Greening, as John mentioned, all the improvements we are incorporating to that street, and also towards Northwestern Highway to, for some visibility for the building. A lot of attention to the details of these elevations were thought about. We really wanted to, a design that looked residential. Sometimes you'll see these wrap buildings, and they look a little like warehouses or just very kind of repetitive and just look like a very tall wall. So we worked together with the design team to develop a scheme that we feel really breaks down that four-story mass. We use pitched roofs, change in material, lots of windows, and really some warm colors to try and give the, the large facade a, a nice residential feel. So the elevation at the top is what would face Northwestern Avenue, or Northwestern Highway, and the one at the bottom is what would be along Greening Street. You can see, kind of towards the left of the bottom image, there's a little bit tall of a little tower, if you will, but to signify the entrance to the building. And then, as John mentioned, the parking garage is primarily wrapped with units. It's only visible on two sides, and those would be the southern and the eastern facade. You can see on the top elevation, which is what would be visible from the south, the garage is, continues that character. We want to continue the materials across so that the building reads cohesive and doesn't look like a parking garage with units wrapped around. The three-story building to the rear of the site, as John mentioned, has garages, some tuck-under garages at the first level, and then units above. We carried the same character across this building with the pitched roofs and the material changes, along with lots of glass and kind of a warm color palette. These are just the shorter elevations. The materials will primarily be some masonry, primarily at lower levels, like the ground level, at pedestrian level, and then mostly some fiber cement, so either siding, vertical board and batten, and even a panel that sort of looks like wood, to give, again, that kind of warm, warm feeling. These are some imagery, just kind of representative of the amenities that will be included in the project. Some game rooms, kitchen spaces, co-working, those are really big right now with work-from-home, fitness center, and then sort of the idea behind the exterior courtyards. There'll be a pool, and then lots of seating areas and outdoor kitchens and additional items. This is a building rendering from Northwestern Highway. You can really see better than in the flat on elevations that we're really playing with that roofline. We're really bringing down the scale of the building and really trying to give it a residential feel as you drive along Northwestern Highway. And this is just kind of a little snapshot on Greening Street at the building entrance. We're looking at a sort of an entry plaza with landscaping, and then as you kind of look down the street, you can see the, a little glimpse of kind of what that streetscape could be, with streets, or street trees, parallel parking, bike racks, and hopefully people walking their dogs to the dog park.
Thanks, Jennifer. So as you can see, the, the, the wrap-style building, it's relatively new to the Michigan market. There, there are a handful of them that have been built and constructed. They're successful. They're within a year of construction. There's a handful more that are currently in development stages to be, to be groundbreaking construction at some point in the spring. As you can see from kind of some of the selective images we've showed you, this is a high, high, high-quality building. There's an associated cost associated with that, with all the off-site improvements and everything else, to try and create a lifestyle for the, the demographic we're targeting. We know that we are aggressively asking for density. We, we absolutely understand that, and, but, but we just want to make sure that everybody understands that density is commensurate with the quality of the construction and the quality of the development. Everyone knows that, that commercial follows rooftops. You know, that's, that's, that's kind of the formula that works. The introduction of these residents into the city are going to do nothing but help and assist the adjacent retail, commercial areas, and we hope that you're, you're happy with what we're proposing. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have, along with my team. I believe Todd's up.
Does anybody have any questions yet?
Not yet.
I'll hold mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there we are. All right, bear with me one second. Okay. All right, we'll get this map back up. Good evening. I'm going to summarize our report on this particular project. The applicant is, and Mr. Gardner have done a good job of giving you an overview, so I'll, I'll skip. Starting with the PUD qualification, because that's one of the most important considerations as this project is before you. As has been indicated, the Planning Commission has reviewed the criteria and finds that, in fact, in June granted preliminary PUD qualification, and then a more recent meeting made a full recommendation on, on the conceptual PUD plan. Some of the criteria that we want to briefly highlight, you can do a PUD in any zoning district, so that's not an issue. The concept is that the use of this option shall not be for the sole purpose of avoiding zoning requirements and shall be reflective of what your master plan overall vision is. And I'm going to talk about the master plan in a minute, because I want to get into some details on that. It shouldn't be used in situations where the same land use objectives can be accomplished by conventional zoning. I think this is clearly a case where you don't have a conventional zoning district that fits this particular proposal. It, it may only be effectuated where the proposed land use will not materially add service and facility loads beyond those contemplated in the plan. Once again, that ties back to the plan, which I'll talk about in a minute. And then under E on page three, we get into the actual, one of the following objectives must be met in order to qualify for a PUD. The applicant identified three of them. You only have to meet one of them, and the Planning Commission agreed. One being to provide alternative uses for parcels which can provide transition buffers to residential areas. Under number five there, E5, to guarantee the provision of public improvement, which would not otherwise be required, that would further the public health, safety, and welfare. And some of the road improvements are certainly key to that. These are off-site road improvements that would not be required of a site plan that are a part of this proposal. And then under number seven, Roman numeral number seven, to foster the aesthetic appearance of the city through quality building design, site development, provision of trees and landscaping beyond the minimum requirements. And the applicant just took you through the high-quality architecture that they are proposing. So as we get into the, the request for qualification, I want to kind of skip ahead a couple of pages and talk about the actual plan itself. So I'm on, I'm on page six. So as the applicant has indicated, there's three hundred and sixteen total units that are proposed in two different buildings. And as you know, when we look at allowed development, we look at rooms, not bedrooms. And so we count, for example, you've got the living room, and then you've got the bedroom. So if you have a, a one-bedroom apartment, that's not a, a one-room, it's really a two-room. So that's how your ordinance treats rooms versus units. And so we provided you what could be permitted in your multiple-family districts, just so you have that as a comparison. And this is certainly more dense than would be allowed in a traditional multiple-family district. The master plan, I think this is a very important element of this type of consideration, because when we're looking at any type of change of zoning or a plan-unit development, the master plan should be a guide. So your master plan indicates that this could potentially have a combination of non-center-type business and multiple-family development. So there is some multiple-family development anticipated as part of the master plan. Now, this is also in a master plan special study, special planning area. And there's some key elements from that that I want to highlight. The master plan envisioned that a PUD would probably be the most appropriate route for this particular area. So this falls in line with that. It indicates that the development, you should encourage development of the entire Farmington Heights subdivision as a mixed-use development that could be similar to a central business district, including major road business frontages in the redevelopment of the site as much as possible. So when you start to think about what's envisioned here, the master plan thinks of this as being like a central business district. So a total change of what's really there now, redeveloping with a greater level of intensity. And so promoting that mixed-use development, including increased height for the entire area under a unified plan, and then there's some provisions. Some of those things include pedestrian-friendly environments, sidewalks, bike paths, and other amenities, and making sure that the increase in height is in proportion to the amount of land being used in the development. The applicant has indicated parking. That's something they're asking for as a relief in your parking requirements. Typically, the concept plan notes five hundred and thirty-three spaces that they're proposing, and it's six hundred and forty-five spaces would be required under your ordinance. What they are suggesting is that by providing one space per bedroom, they believe that that is adequate. I will tell you that in our experience, we have seen developments of a similar style and nature require less parking than the two parking spaces per unit that is typically found. So in concept, we don't see that that's necessarily an issue. The question is, is it appropriate to consider some type of provision in a PUD agreement if this makes it to that stage, that if there is additional parking needed, could there be a way to provide for some through an additional provision? Like, for example, they're making an improvement to, to Greening Street, and they're going to be putting parking on the east side of that roadway. There could be room to add parallel parking on the west side at a later date if, in fact, there was not enough parking available to serve the site. That could be something that may be considered as a trigger for some additional parking if it's shown at some point in the future to need additional parking. So those are some of the things that, that could be considered if you're looking for a way to say, okay, well, we're comfortable with this to a certain point, but maybe we need to have some type of, of relief valve if we need some additional parking. So those are the types of creative things we try to think about when we're looking at plan-unit development. So I'd like to conclude by just indicating the exceptions to the zoning standards. They're asking for relief from the zoning ordinance, which they're allowed to do through the PUD process. So they're looking for, the use, multiple-family is not permitted in the underlying zoning districts, but it is envisioned in the master plan. Density, they're asking for a density that is in excess of your multiple-family districts. They're asking for height. They're asking for a fifty-two-foot height. We point out that the closest to that is the underlying current B3 district on a portion of the site which allows fifty feet. So they're asking for two feet more than the, the most intense district that's currently underlying, which was that B3 district. And then side street setbacks, they're, they're looking for some relief in the side street setbacks. Twenty-five feet required versus thirteen and twenty feet proposed. And then also relief on the rear yard setback, where thirty-five feet would be required in an RA4 single-family district, and they're asking for twenty-five feet. And then, as I mentioned, the parking, that's the other area where they are asking for relief. So that summarizes the areas that we've identified, just looking at this concept plan, where we believe that they're looking for consideration of relief from the ordinance. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I have questions. I'm not sure, though, if there's more presentations, I can wait till the end.
You have more presentations or just the public hearing to go?
Public hearing.
Do you like to ask now or wait until the public hearing?
I can wait till after the public hearing, that's fine.
I can ask a question now.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Rod, thank you for your comments, Mr. Royal, and the proponent as well. We appreciate your presentation. The relief that the proponent is seeking and the benefits or what he's putting in, the community benefits that he's putting in as well, what is your viewpoint regarding, is that comparable? Or, I mean, you mentioned a couple of things that are, that regarding parking, you said that additional parking can be added to the project after the development has taken place, or are you talking about through the PTPUD process, the parking that may be necessary? What's, actually two questions, two points, though, just those two points first.
Well, there is, one of the things we look at is off-site improvements, because you don't typically see off-site improvements when you have a traditional site plan. And so although I don't have a complete understanding of the full extent, the applicant says they're still working out, but you've got two, or actually three streets that they've talked about, two in particular that are only partially paved, and one that is paved that are going to see additional improvements. In addition to the fact that Greening is going to be improved and additional right-of-way is going to be dedicated for that. So these are, these are improvements that you typically would not see with just a traditional site plan. And then also, there are specific amenities, like incorporating the dog park, incorporating some of the other landscaping amenities and the street trees, the street furniture. You know, you saw that image that looked like a pretty urban neighborhood. Your master plan speaks to this as being like a central business district. So to me, that seems like it is generally in line with, with that particular vision. And the parking is, you know, once again, that's, that's something that I think could be worked out in a, in a PUD agreement in terms of how that might, something might be provided if there's not enough parking. But they've provided some examples, at least when they were front of the Planning Commission, of some projects of a similar nature that they believe are being parked at a, at a similar, that, level that they're proposing. And like I said, I'm not overly concerned with parking in this instance. I think, I think it's pretty close to, to the mark, and it may be just fine. I mean, obviously, you don't, you never know until it gets occupied and who's there and how it functions, but I, I'm not overly concerned about the parking number.
Okay. The other question is, you mentioned fifty feet, we asked, the proponent asked for fifty-two feet. Where's the fifty feet representative, or project nearby that compares to this? Is that nearby in proximity? How far is it?
There's some four-story buildings nearby. If you go right across the street, there's, and then down just a little bit to the west on the other side of Northwestern, there's some hotel projects that are four stories. So there are some in the area that are of a similar number of stories, roughly the same height.
Okay. And the other one regarding, you mentioned how much more dense compared to what's allowed. What do you mean by that?
Well, if, I'll give you the exact answer to that. On the bottom of page six, under the RC3, which is your most intense multiple-family district, you could, in fact, have three hundred rooms permitted. They're proposing eight hundred and nineteen rooms. Okay? I gave you that room comparison. That gives you an indication that it is much more dense than, than your, than your districts. But also keep in mind that your multiple-family districts are truly suburban multiple-family districts. If you look at the master plan designation, where this is ident- If you look at the master plan designation where this is identified as a central business district, I don't think you would find that a development would come under one of your suburban multiple-family districts. It would be more intense. The question for you to decide is, do you believe that this is a reasonable level? You know, they're proposing four stories. Four stories isn't totally out of character with the area, and this density is going to be higher than what you're going to find in your multiple-family districts. That's not surprising.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. Anybody else, or should we open the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing right now, and please share your thoughts with us. Try to keep it at about three minutes. And before I call, I will open the public hearing, and I also want to get into Jason Fleck's three emails that he wrote to see what's going on there. So I will now open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak can come up.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Clarahan. I live at 31918 Highview, about 90 yards from the southeast corner of the proposed development. I had the opportunity to speak at the planning commission meeting, which was nice, and voiced some of my concerns about the proposal, namely, talking about kind of privacy concerns and things like that. First, I've mentioned cut-through traffic. And the proponent has clarified some of the cut-through traffic that would be mitigated by paving, Greening, Rexwood, and Melforton. I'd like to make sure that those commitments are actually commitments and that they'll happen. So that's one key point. Also, I agree that probably some of the cut-through traffic shall be mitigated in that way, but with one of the exits of the parking garage being on Highview Avenue. I'm thinking that there's probably going to be some cut-through traffic that goes along Highview and cuts through the dirt road anyway. Another concern was rush hour traffic in that 14-mile in Orchard Lake kind of corridor with the roundabout that has a traffic light right after it is already kind of a mess. And with, obviously, huge density in that area, that's been outlined as being above kind of what we already have, that'd be a concern that we need to keep in mind. The water detention pond, I was assured, or yeah, assured that it would be helpful to our situation in the neighborhood. You know, it's supposed to help with excess water. However, we have a similar pond kind of behind where the old Kmart used to be in Best Buy area. There's always water in it. So I just want to make sure that it doesn't worsen the condition of our current neighborhood, which already has water flowing over the culverts on both Highview and on...
Pershing.
Pershing, thank you. So I want to make sure that it can help our current situation, not hurt it or keep it even net zero. I'd like it to help, or, you know, get some help from the city there. And then the last concerns I had were about potential crime, noise, and litter, which are always going to be concerns when you have higher density. And I'm thinking, I didn't mention this at the planning commission meeting, but it could be reduced or improved with the addition of some type of barrier, whether it's a hard barrier or trees, natural tree line, something like that. And the setbacks of the proposal, you know, or having some kind of deviation from the standard, it's already closer to the road, but I'd like a little bit of help there. We already are inundated with noise from the east side coming from a nightclub down the road, bouncing off the paved area there. So just want to make sure that we're not having a louder and messier neighborhood. I appreciate the time to be able to speak today, and I'd like to say I'm not in any way an opponent of growth and development of the city, but I'm hoping that the council will advocate for myself and my neighbors to make sure that our best interests aren't ignored or forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to point out that with the PUD, all of the promises made are written in a contractual form, and they must be adhered to. So if they say they're going to pave or they're going to put in trees, and I noticed that in the packet we got, there's a listing of hundreds of trees and plantings that are going to go into that area, which should really help soften the sound. May I ask you, do you have sewer and water? Okay, so I'll get to the proponent after we close the public hearing on that. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, seeing no one, I want to point out that your neighbor Jason did send us several emails relating exactly to your questions and concerns about cut-through traffic, what's going to be paved and what isn't going to be paved, and the sound and noise. And he's also concerned about the detention pond always being full and being a breeding ground for mosquitoes and other pests, which we have to make sure doesn't happen. And he also sent several photos of the Highview Street totally overrun with water. And we recognize that this year has been extremely wet, but it's just been dramatically changed, and you've been flooded out several times. So we want to try to address that as well. And he also has the same concerns you do regarding the parking garage and the potential for mischief that sometimes parking garages bring. So we'll address that in a few questions as well. And I think I've covered Jason's three emails pretty well, and the traffic mitigation will go over again as well. Since nobody else wants to come up for the public questions, public hearing, I'll now officially close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Okay, council, your questions? Ms. Knoll.
Okay, thanks. Well, I have quite a few questions here, so, and I don't want to steal the thunder because some other council members may have the same questions, but I'll just, I'll start with parking. I'll start there. So you mentioned 1.7 spaces per unit, is that, I believe that's what I wrote down. So, and I am concerned that there's not enough parking. The reason I say that is because in our package here, there were some comments about, you know, your market, they are using ride-sharing, and they don't all own their cars. But I don't necessarily believe that, especially if these truly are going to be luxury condos, I wish they were condos, but luxury apartments. Most, and I do want to know the price point of the one, two, and three bedrooms, but most people that can afford a luxury apartment also own their own car. In fact, I was just reading an article in Automotive News today, I work in the auto industry, and I also was reading a national consultant study that it's actually quite the opposite. Due to COVID, since COVID, the auto industry, first of all, is completely rebounding. Anyone who's tried to buy a car knows that now. I mean, you can barely find a car on a lot right now, and part of that's due to the chip shortage and a variety of other reasons, but the fact is, people are buying cars. People want their own car. During COVID, they didn't feel comfortable with ride-sharing and other forms of, you know, transportation, shared transportation. So I do believe these people are going to have their own cars if these are going to be luxury apartments as stated. I also know that if you're targeting single people, young professionals in their 20s and 30s, if they're single, they tend to go out on the weekends with their friends, and that's maybe when they use the Uber and Lyft, which is good if they're drinking, good, glad they're using it then, even though they still own their own car. I'm glad they're using it then. But I also find that they tend to have girlfriends, boyfriends, or friends come back to their apartment with them after the bar and spend the night. And a lot of them have cars. They meet up at someone's apartment, they all park their cars there, they all ride-share an Uber to the bar, hang out all night, come back, spend the night there, go home the next morning. Very frequent in apartment living. And so you also have a lot of guest parking, so it's not just the residents having spaces for their cars, but it's all of the guests that they tend to have, especially if you're targeting a younger generation, people in their 20s and 30s. They have a lot of friends coming over to visit them. So I have a concern with the parking. If this is to get approved with this amount of parking, I definitely would like to see some sort of requirement that at a future date, there is a way to put in more parking. Not having enough parking can lead to some bad relations between neighbors. Anyone who's had friends that live in downtown Chicago where there's not enough parking knows you circle the block round and round to try to find a parking spot, and you're sometimes getting fights with your neighbors because you're just about to get in a spot and they come in and grab it from you. And I wouldn't want to have anything like that happen in a luxury apartment building. So if the rest of the council doesn't feel the way I do about adding more parking now, I think it's something that we have to plan for in the future if it becomes an issue. And if I'm wrong, so be it. I welcome being wrong in this case, but I would rather have an option so we don't have a situation in five years that there's no place to put in more parking. I already mentioned I would like to know the cost of these apartment buildings, what you're planning. I want them to be luxury, that's wonderful. They look it based on the renderings, and by the way, great job. I love what I see here with the renderings. But I also know that in Farmington Hills, when we built apartments, when people, not the city, but when developers put in apartments back in the 70s and 80s, they also claimed they were luxury apartments and high-end apartments, and they were for 20 years. And then they were upgraded after 20 years, and when you don't upgrade your home after 20 years or apartment after 20 years, it's no longer luxury. And it, you know, brings in, the prices go down, brings in a different clientele, and it's just no longer luxury. So I just don't want to see that situation happen. Farmington Hills already has a higher percentage of apartments than many other cities, so we don't have a good luxury apartment, not many of that right now, but I wouldn't want to see them go downhill in 20 years. So if you can address what means there are to ensure that these are kept luxury going into the future, I would appreciate that, too. And while I'd love to see you say that maybe the three-unit building would be condos and owner-occupied or owner-owned, I should say, I get the feeling that's not going to happen. So I need some assurances that these can stay high-end. And I do have questions about buffering, but I'm going to let, I don't want to take up all the other council members' time, so, and I'm sure, I'm sure many of them have those same questions, too, so I'll let them ask them in a different manner than I may. I'll leave it at that.
Could you answer the question about the price points for the rentals?
Tom Herbst, I'm with the developer. So your question is, are the rental prices that we're asking, you're looking for assurances on what those, I think we're on the same page, we both want them to be as high as possible. As far as assurances or what they are now, obviously, we're multiple years away from this being built, but these are definitely going to be at the top of the market. There's the project just to the north.
West Bloomfield.
West Bloomfield. I can tell you that they're renting at over $2 a foot. They are north of $2 a foot right now. We have conservatively modeled ours at lower than that, just to be safe, but we...
Translate that to per unit?
I think it's...
You build per foot, we think per unit.
We think one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom.
Again, I don't necessarily want to get tied to a number here, but I can tell you they start around $1,500 a unit for the smallest unit is a ballpark. They, obviously, we have three-bedroom units, so they can go as high as $2,000 a unit per month. As far as assurances to keep them at that rate, I mean, obviously, we will have construction financing on a project like this. And so as far as being able to service our debt, hit our debt-service coverage ratios, keep the bank happy, we have to keep our rents at a certain level. So there's no risk here of rents being lower, different, the units falling into disrepair. We are going to be at the top of the market, whatever it happens to be, two years when we come out of the ground. We are going to be at the top of the market, and because of the financing in place at that time, we will have no choice but to stay at that point. If our rents fall, our debt-service coverage ratios fall, and we default on our loan. So it's all math, but it all kind of works in unison.
Don't go on the default route. No, no.
No. So I don't know if that answers your question, but we have absolutely the same goal you do, is to have the rents as high as possible. And again, whatever our financing is, again, costs are through the roof, we all know that. When we started this process three years ago, we could have built this building for 30% cheaper, and it is what it is. So again, our rents are going up every time we run our pro forma. So if that's your concern, we have the same, we have the same goal on that.
Yeah, I think I met with you before I was mayor, right? We were talking about this.
Yep.
Okay.
So I don't know if that answered your question, or if you have other questions specifically about?
You did a good job answering it. I know, I kind of threw the question out there, knowing I'm, I never, no one can ever give me an assurance that in 50 years, these are still going to be considered luxury apartments. I get that. If I can't force you to continue to upgrade the marble in the kitchen or granite or whatever materials you're using, I mean, I can't, I can't force you, the city cannot force you to do that. So, and that's a risk we take. I get that. But you've given me the best assurance you can, at least in the next 20, 30 years. I realize you've got financing, so, you know, you need to keep the rents up as much as possible while you're still dealing with that.
Right.
So if I may, I know there's a few other, if you want me, I can hit on a couple of the concerns right now, or do you want me to just scribble down notes and then handle everything at the end, or how would you like?
Answering as we go is good.
Okay. Detention. So our stormwater management system right now, basically, all that property just flows into Highview, flows off the site. When we're done with this, we have to do a study, and we have to analyze where that water is going and how fast that water is going. And then what we have to do is, through either onsite grading, through submerged pipes and catch basins, we have to capture all that water, bring it into our detention basin and release it at a rate that's equal to or slower than the water that's coming off the site right now. And then we are going to be directly outletting now all that water into the drain that comes just south on the southeast corner of the property. So any water right now on that site that's flowing out into Highview is going to be captured via catch basins, channeled, brought down into our detention basin, treated through the forbay to capture all the sediments, and then released at a controlled rate. And we coordinate with the city and the county and all of that work. There will be permanent water in there at times while the system is working, but it will be ultimately designed as a dry basin. We are proposing a decorative ornamental fence to be all around it, so kids can't jump in there, throw balls in there, or anything else. So that's something that you don't typically see in detention basins as well. It's something we're proposing for this because of the, kind of the infill urban feel that we're trying to go for here. Regarding cut-throughs, I know this was a concern, and like I mentioned before, our intent is to try and minimize our impacts to Highview and focus everything on the west side of the site. Yes, there are two access points out to Highview right now. Those cars, though, if they want to get, if they want to go west, they're going to go through our site and go west. They're not going to go south and around, or they're going to come out to Northwestern and then head southeast on Northwestern. There is no, if you go up Highview, you're going to have to go down and around to cut back up. So I have a feeling a majority of the, you know, if anyone wants to get out to Orchard Lake Road, they're going to be utilizing the road improvements that we're going to be doing on the west side of the site. The city did ask for paving of Luden Street, which is the street directly south of the detention basin. I told them at the time, we, you know, I know the developer does not want to do that. We don't want to introduce that east-west cross-access through here. We're at the mercy of the city on that, but as of right now, our proposal is we do not want to introduce any cross-access east-west through our site or to the bottom of the site. Regarding noise concerns, we do plan on, you know, commiserate with the quality of the development itself. We are proposing an extensive landscape design for this. Right now, it's preliminary, so you've only seen kind of conceptual what we're doing during the site plan process, optimistically hoping we get approved. And to the next step, we'll prepare a comprehensive landscape plan for everything as well, including screening on the south side of the site. Parking, I can get into it. We do have case studies. I know Jennifer can speak to this as well. Developments of this nature, they have done throughout the United States. As I mentioned, this is something that's a little bit new to the Michigan market. You have to be careful because there's a lot of... You have to be careful because there's a lot of different ways you can look at a wrap building. You can look at these, a lot of these are infill in transit-oriented development-type sites where there is a mass modal transport transit system right directly adjacent to it, where you can easily argue, cut the parking in half because it doesn't make sense. You brought some very good points. I'm not a huge fan of Uber-ing right now either, but I can tell you, the millennial market, they don't like debt. They don't, a lot of them don't own cars, a lot of them lease, rent, whatever. Am I telling you that, you know, 80% of these people are going to use Uber all the time to get, absolutely not. Maybe a handful of them may, I don't know. And that demographic kind of is fluctuating right now. COVID is tough to kind of figure out. I do know that we talked internally after the last meeting, and like I said, we can, we do have case studies showing, you know, that 1.6, 1.7 is the ideal, what we feel is the ideal number of parking spaces for developments similar to this in suburban areas. But one thing we did talk about, if there's concerns, we can absolutely restrict the amount of parking allowed per the lease agreements. So one-bedrooms, you're only allowed to have one car. And this will be, pardon me, this will be a monitored site. There is a full-time staff onboard as part of the leasing and maintenance. So that handles a couple things. One, if there's any sort of complaints about anything in the garage, anything else, there will be staff at the facility full-time that can address that. From a maintenance perspective, the exact same. If there's anything that they see is, what's the phrase, you know, if there's anything that degenerates over time or anything else, that there is staff there to address it and maintenance programs onboard as well. So if, and on top of that, they would monitor, monitor the parking. So if there's, you know, every car would have a license plate registered with their lease agreement, and if there's concerns about this and it becomes problematic, it absolutely is something that can be entered into lease agreements to make sure that we help control that each unit is only allowed X cars, whether it's one, two, or however many cars. That's it for now.
Okay. Dr. Bruce?
Just a question for our attorney. Mr. Jopik, we're just here tonight to approve or deny the PUD. So we're not doing a site plan approval of any kind tonight, or are we taking into account the renderings and the information given to us to make a decision on the PUD, or is it just really focusing on approving the PUD?
I'm happy to answer that, but Mr. Gardner, I see you stepping up.
Madam Mayor, yeah, this is the, the proponent is asking you to approve the PUD plan. That is the plan before you. They will require a PUD contract at a later meeting at the council level, and then a final site plan and landscape plan at the planning commission level.
So things could change significantly between approval of the PUD and a site plan approval through-
No, not significantly.
So what they're showing us tonight, if it's approved, would be pretty much what would come back to us.
Right, with some more details.
Okay.
The landscape plan will have the trees and the lighting plan and-
So if we approve this PUD, it would have to be, for the most part, exactly the way it's being presented tonight in terms of all the renderings, the plans, so on and so forth.
And, correct. And if you wanted a little more confidence in that, you can put it in the PUD agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I supplement?
Sure.
Briefly. Agree with everything Mr. Gardner says, and kind of building on what he just ended with. In terms of the PUD agreement, what can happen tonight, and I think council's aware of this, is providing any conditions that you feel are important to include in the PUD agreement. You know, we can gather from some of the things said and items that have been identified on the plan, but if you want to solidify or highlight any of those, do that as part of your motion so that we know what to put in the PUD agreement, so that when it comes back to you, we have everything in there that is of the real highlighted concerns from city council, as well as as much of the other things as we can pull together.
Okay.
I have another question for Mr. Arroyo. In terms of the, I think the three major concerns are the parking, the height, and the density of this project. Since we're an older community, and we're surrounded by older communities as well, in your experience, do you see other older communities kind of allowing or expanding in their developments, these three issues, going up higher, maybe not as much parking, having a higher density in terms of the development, in terms of apartment buildings such as this? Would this be in character with what other cities are doing, or would this be out of character with what other cities are doing?
The answer to that question is yes, in the appropriate area. So those areas where the city's looking for some more density that fits in with the overall long-range plan. So not just increasing density for the sake of increasing density. But there is definitely a trend towards, I'm seeing some more multiple-family density in select areas where you've got the infrastructure in place that can handle it, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I actually have more.
I do, too. Okay. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions, and I'm not sure who to direct the first one at, but let me, I'll just get to the point here. I'm going to tag off of some of the questions asked by Councilwoman Knoll. And those particularly, first of all, this causes me a little bit of disquiet when I look at the litany of variances from this, the areas to be accomplished by the PUD. I mean, it does make sense because it's a compilation of different zoning areas that you're trying to put together, but it also sounds like you're trying to make, make this space work utilizing the PUD. I do have concern about the number of parking spaces, but I'm going to focus in, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, but the question was the gentleman behind you. The question to, what does the monthly rent look at, look like on this? And I'm sorry, the $2 a square foot, we're thinking, I'm thinking in terms of a one-bedroom at this amount per month, two-bedroom, et cetera. I would like to know the answer to that question, and that was not provided to my satisfaction.
$1,500.
Well, that was really roundabout, and $1,500, what's the two, what's the three? And there's a reason I'm asking that question. And the second thing is, who is actually, would end up being the developer slash manager or owner of this property? Are you representing them, the other gentleman, or how does that work?
I am the CFO for the development company. Alden Development Group is the owner and developer. The LLC that you see before you, Farmington Hills Lofts LLC, is just the legal entity to buy the parcel, but Alden Development Group is the developer and owner and would be the owner. This is a legacy project. We look to hold this project for the next 50 years. It's a generational asset that we look to enjoy for many years to come. So that, I am representing ownership. John is our engineer. We have our architects here, but I'm representing ownership. As far as the actual rents, again, it costs what it costs today. We think this is, we started this three years ago, and it's gone up 30%. We're now talking $80 million, and it could be $90 million by tomorrow. So I can give you rent numbers as of today, but the more the cost goes up, the higher the rent has to go. But just to give you a frame of reference, just a ballpark, a one-bedroom is at that $1,500 a month level. A two-bedroom is now pushing $2,000 a month, and the three-bedrooms are $2,500 a month. These are just, again, round numbers as with the costs I have, the costs I have today, the interest rates I have today. But again, those can go up or down as the other variables in that change.
Sure. So that's what I was, thank you.
Okay.
That's, that was kind of where I was putting this down, based on what the previous conversation was. So the company that would be owning this, do you have other locations that have been around, that are around the area that we can understand what the longevity of the company is in terms of these properties that you own?
As John mentioned, this product type is new to the area. So no, we do, unfortunately, we have not built a project like this in the metro Detroit area that we can all go drive and look at. We've, have been doing real estate projects for 30 years, office, single-family, for-sale, commercial, multifamily, more of the traditional three-story breezeway walk-ups. So we do have a history of doing real estate projects in the area.
Of those apartments?
I'm sorry? Yes.
Okay, because here's where I'm going with this. Looking at this, I kind of like the use, I do have those concerns. Why can't you do it as owner-occupied condos?
Why can't?
Could you, could you do the numbers so that these, the same targeted folks that you're looking at to buy, to rent these, actually make their investment and buy these, buy condos in this luxury facility? And, I mean, is that a possibility that we could be talking about?
That's not typically the market for this project. So this-
Okay.
This project with this style of parking is usually a renter. If we were going to do a for-sale product, it would be a different configuration, it's a different building, it's parked differently. Suddenly, we have different density issues, so it's a different market. The guy, the individual who wants to purchase is looking for a different experience that's not this, unfortunately.
Sure. Okay. And the reason I'm asking you that question, and I'm going to be very transparent, I literally lived in this community my whole life. So I have watched it grow from a very rural area that has, you know, 34 square miles and 10,000 people in a township, to what Farmington Hills is today. There are a number of different examples that I can give you where luxury apartment complexes came in. Those were built, they appealed to the same demographic, I guess you would refer to it, of course, which generation it would be, depending on those years. But you age it 20 to 30 years, and the next luxury apartment complex that's going to go down the road from where this one is, is going to, and I'm, this is kind of playing off what my colleague brought up. Your apartment complex, how are you going to ensure that it's there? Because every one of those apartment complexes that was the luxury, was the address to have, is now decreasing their rents to make sure that their census is high. There are changes going on because of that, and it's causing us a lot of concern for health, safety, and welfare reasons. So I'm not really inclined to want to see, well, what would this be, 316, is that what that all works out to be? 316 apartments? Because I can point you to 316 apartment complexes that now represent a big draw on our public safety. And that's why I'm not really inclined to like the idea of, I would encourage you to look at, hey, these look great. By the way, I do like the elevations, I like the layouts, but making it an owner-occupied opportunity where people are invested in the homes in which they live, they're much less likely to see the transition over time, because while I'm, I'm old now, I'll just say it, and I've been here a long time, but 30 years from now, whoever's sitting at this seat and has to address our public about why that complex is starting to have problems, my assurances are a little bit, you know, it's vague. And you can tell me that this is all great and you're going to keep high taxes or high rents, but I'm not liking it for-
I think the difference here, perhaps, between what we proposed and perhaps some of these other examples you're referring to, are the density and the amenities. And so we are offering more amenities over these other projects you're talking about, which were built 30 years ago, and they're spread out over larger areas, and they are more walk-ups and it's surface parking. Because we are densely packed, we have the parking garage, which is a huge cost, we have all these amenities that we talked about, we have, because it's so expensive, it's a chicken or an egg thing here, because this building is so expensive, I have to attract those high rents to be able, for this project to make sense. At some point, it's just math. So, but to get those high rents, I have to offer those amenities. And so for this project to work, I, along with all of you, want those rents to stay high, I have to build those amenities to keep attracting those people that'll continue to pay those high rents. So I have the same motivation you do. I can't let this project fall into disrepair. I can't let the amenities fall by the wayside. I have to keep it refreshed. I have to keep it at the top of the market so that I can continue to attract the top of the market rents, so I can continue to service my debt. So again, I would, and I don't know what the projects you're referring to, but I would argue the projects that were built in the 70s and the 80s were not like this at all, did not have these finished levels, did not have these amenities, and so they could shave some off the top and still get by because there wasn't those items to do the upkeep for.
And I will agree with you, they don't have the same amenities that you have, although at the time they were built.
Yeah, they have pools, volleyball courts.
Yeah, they have pools, volleyball courts, commons areas, and were, at the time, they were cutting edge. What happens over time is what I'm talking about. And that's why I asked about the, you know, if you have other properties that have been around for 20 or 30 years, that we, that have this kind of longevity that are demonstrating this. Because, and my, I guess my other question, and I don't know if Mr. Arroyo or Mr. Gardner can answer it, but in the, in my thinking, the city of Farmington Hills has a fairly high percentage of rental properties. And what is a city of our size and configuration in terms, are we at the high end of rental properties, at the low end, right in the middle? And I actually looked this stuff up and found some data on, you know, Google's a wonderful thing, and you can look things up like that, but I would rather hear it from the experts.
That's not something we've studied recently. That's something we'll be studying as part of the master plan update, but I haven't recently done a comparison of how you relate to similar situated cities. So I, off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer.
Okay. It's, I know that parts of our city back, oh, this would have been about 2,000, there was some segments that were as high as 70% were rental properties if you tagged an area. And some areas are going to be a lot higher, some areas are going to be a lot lower. But my, that's my challenge in looking at this, is that these, what were luxury apartments at the time are now causing issues, and whoever was on, in our seats at that, in that approval process, would have had this, I would have hoped they had the same question. So that's, that's where I am, and I'm not getting, you know, I'd love to see the math and how it, how it couldn't work the other way, but anyway, I'll stop with my questions. That's where I'm at with this.
Bill, do you want to ask a few more?
Well, sure. The one thing I didn't see on the plan here, on the layout plan, is garbage dumpsters, and I am curious how you're going to be handling garbage and recycling. I don't see them in the parking layout, and it is small, so I'm sure they're there, but if you could point them out, and then also, are you going to have recycling? That is a big complaint that we get from a lot of our apartment owners, is they want recycling, but because it's privately owned, they don't have access to city trash pickup and recycling.
Yeah, absolutely. The level of detail of what we have right now, because we're still in the kind of the, you know, the preliminary PUD stage, once we get into site planning, we will dive into some of those details more. But I can tell you, is there a cursor? There we go. Is there a cursor? Yeah. Oh, it's not showing up on the screen. Okay. As far as the, if you look at the garage itself, in the northeast and the southwest corners are going to be locations for the dumpsters. They will be compactors in there. There's also going to be a recycling program that will be available to all the tenants. And then what happens is those dumpsters are, they're compacted, and then they will be rolled, once, once they're full, or whatever day trash pickup comes in, they will be rolled out by staff, out into the parking lot, picked up, and then rolled back in by staff into the- the enclosed area. So you're not going to see dumpsters outside. It's all going to, for the most part, be enclosed. Now, for the southern unit, there is a dumpster location. If you look at the northeast corner of the, if you look at the, the southern building, kind of to the northeast, I wish I had the circling it on the screen, but, hold on, let me see if it'll, if the laser pointer works. I don't know if this works or not. Oh, that doesn't work either. So if you see in the parking, you see up on the north, kind of the, the east side of the parking for the southern building, you can see one of the parking spaces is kind of blocked off, right there. That is, right now, a proposed dumpster location. That would be screened as well.
Okay. I, I know that's not maybe a question that normally comes up with PUD approval. But again, this all comes back to the whole point of, you're saying these are luxury apartments.
Yep.
And, and based on that rent, I mean, when I compare them to some of the other apartments in our community that were built in the seventies and eighties, the rent's actually not that different. So I was actually, I thought it would be higher, to be honest with you, the, the one, the fifteen hundred, two thousand, twenty-five hundred. So I was a little surprised by that. So again, I'm asking some questions that normally might not get asked. But I want to ensure that these are luxury apartments, because I have the same concerns, too, with, with the density. And, and again, how can we make sure these, these stay well-maintained, you know, when we're not going to be here in fifty years? And we want these to be sustainable in our community for many, many years. I mean, I acknowledge, this is a very, very difficult site to develop. I get it. And, and I know that you're not going to put single-family in here, a large, you know, single-family residential. You can't put office back here. You can't put retail, because there's no good access or visibility from Orchard Lake or Northwestern. So, so I do get that this is probably what needs to happen on the site. Again, I just have a bit of concern with the high density and what this could mean if these are not maintained at a luxury level
Sure.
in thirty, forty, fifty years. I know you're going to, you know, keep them as long as you're still financing them, you'll maintain them. But what about after that? So I'm just reiterating myself. I know you can't answer all my questions, but I'm just really trying to make that point, because that's where I'm struggling tonight.
And I-
Is with that density and, and how we can keep them well-maintained.
I, I get, I get the longevity. That, that, that's commensurate with, with any development that comes in here. If someone's coming in with an office space, and they want to build an office building, does that office building become obsolete in fifteen, twenty years when someone else comes in with something that just has a, you know, a better amenity package? It, it's, it's, it's a great question. And it's absolutely, I understand the concerns. It's, it's difficult to give you, stand here and give you an accurate answer of exactly what, what this will look like fifty years from now. George Jetson might be flying above us. I don't know what, you know, I, I, you know, I'm being facetious, but we don't know. But, but I absolutely can tell you that the goal is with a product like this, it's, it's a, you know, it is, these, these developments are relatively new, like I mentioned. And the goal is a lifestyle, you know, to, to create it, to market a lifestyle, bring in, you know, there'd be remote dry cleaning services available for the people here. I mean, it's just little, little new, you know, services such as that, that are going to help out. And all these additional little perks that, that come with the lease of, of one of these lots, that will help drive what we're trying to do here.
Okay. Yes, Jack?
Yes. Yes. The plan that's presented, I like the exterior of the building. It really, I think, kind of fitted in with that corridor that this building, this development is going into. But I think, like most people, I do have a concern regarding the parking of one point seven spots per apartment. We don't live in a city or area in which people don't drive cars. We're the motor city capital of the world. Everyone has a car. So even if you have a one-bedroom apartment, more than likely, you're going to have at least two cars for that apartment. We're not a big ride-sharing city, because people don't usually not have cars. They, everyone have, have a car. Every home that I know have multiple cars. So in saying that, in the one point seven cars per, a car, per apartment, if it's not enough, even if you say apartment, you only have one spot, you're still going to have more than one car. People are going to be trying to drive around, trying to get a parking spot. These are young people. They're going to have guests, as, as Ms. Noe said earlier. So in saying all that, I heard that we could perhaps add some additional parking on the street, but street side, I think that was, was it, let's see, Highview, was that Highview Avenue?
Greening.
But, yeah, Greenlee? And I don't know exactly how many spots of, at its, you know, that we could add along that particular street. But I don't think it'll be enough to accommodate the people who live in the apartment and their guests that may well be coming over. If you're young, you're going to have people coming over all the time. You're just, that's just the way, way it is. And so if there's an excess overflow, then where would those cars go? They can't all get on that one street.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may. The Planning Commission talked about this extensively. They had the same concerns.
Yeah.
And what, what the Planning Commission came to the conclusion was there were ample opportunity to add parking. Greening, if you look at the retention area, okay, if you put in underground retention, there's a, and you extend that on the east side, where you got that row of parking, you just extend that down into the retention area, and you could add, you know, eighty parking spaces easily in that area.
So why is that done on the plan? Is there a reason, a rationale, that you don't?
The, the proponent-
Oh, okay.
The proponent feels comfortable with the, with the parking as, as-is.
Okay.
And the Planning Commission stated that in the PUD agreement, we need to have so, if we need some assurances, that if there is a parking issue, that those two areas where they felt parking could be expanded would have to be looked into at that time. You, like I said, along greening, you could add some parking. If there's a minor problem, you could add a little parking there. If there's a major problem, then they're going to have to come in and re-engineer that back area and add parking.
Okay. I like the way the outside look. I know we talk about luxury. So how do you find, define luxury within the, within the apartment itself? Are these high-end appliances? You know, best counter, you know, granite, marble, wood flooring, top-of-the-line carpeting?
Yeah. Definitely high-end interior finishes and appliances. I'll look more to the owner and comments on those. But also, it carries to the exterior of the building. So using higher-quality exterior materials like brick and fiber cement, things that will last and kind of give a timeless look as well. Not looking, not using cheaper kind of materials that may wear and kind of give the building a quicker, make it look like it's aging quicker. And especially carrying those finishes to the amenity spaces, and even down to just the details, just a higher level of design that goes into every aspect of the building in order to call it that luxury.
Okay. And just one last question. It's regarding the setback on Northwestern Highway. From the renderings, it looks like the, there's not going to be a lot of buffer between a busy street Northwestern and where the building starts. It's not a lot, I think they're going from usually twenty-five feet to between thirteen and twenty feet?
Yeah.
For the street-side setbacks?
Well, that's to the property line.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I know what it was.
Uh-huh.
Thirty foot setback.
Thirty foot, yeah.
It might be a little deceiving, the rendering. Sometimes we take some creative liberties. But it is pretty, something I did mean to mention that also comes into play with that setback is the units on the first floor. Like, sometimes these developments will have parking on the first floor, but that was a, like, that was a non-starter. We wanted really it to be pedestrian-friendly. So there are units on the ground floor. And when they're at, along Northwestern, they'll have kind of extended patios. It'll be fenced, but that patio will be a little bit deeper. Not all the way to the sidewalk. There's still a lot of room of a landscape buffer and the sidewalk, and then another landscape before you get to the road.
Yeah, I like the idea of bringing younger people within, to the city, and for the commercial benefits that they would have on that area, Northwestern and Orchard Lake. But there, I do have those concerns regarding the development.
I do have a quick answer to Councilwoman Massey's question about percentage of rentals within communities. I was able to do a quick look at the communities to the east and west, so City of Southfield and Novi. So as of twenty nineteen data, the most recent I can find, Farmington Hills has thirty-five percent renter-occupied housing units, so thirty-five percent of the total. Novi has thirty-two percent. And the City of Southfield has forty-eight percent renter-occupied. So that at least is a comparison with communities to the east and the west.
Thank you.
Quick, on the fly.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Okay. I do then. When I first saw the density, I, my eyes popped out of my head. And I remember dealing with Claireview and Highview back in the early two thousands. And we really wanted to clean that whole area up and make sure our residents had the ability to move somewhere that was, yeah, this has been a project for a long time. And it's, and Mel Caftan came in, and he proposed two hundred and fifty-five apartment units or condo units where the Home Depot is right now. And the council just said, no, that's way, way too dense. What we've learned in the ensuing twenty-two years is that millennials and younger people with the great resignation and everything else is, they're not heading down to offices very much. So the fact that we're, we're looking at a lot of cars, my husband and I are sharing one car right now. And when I look at these kinds of units, I see that while you're targeting young people, they are also great for people who just want to sell their house and downsize, and not go into a senior living center. So those would be people like me that would take a three-bedroom apartment and have one car. And I would have the three bedrooms so that my grandson could come visit. So I, I don't think that we need the parking that we used to need. But I'm going to throw out two other options here. One is a Zipcar area. I know some of the apartments downtown have Zipcars available on premises where they can go in and, and rent the car, so that they're not in an Uber. Or if they're going to pick out a piece of furniture, they can get a van or whatever. So there's an option for that. Number two, I don't see any EV stations. And if you're going to be dealing with young people that aren't going to be driving very far, or driving downtown and then back up.
Absolutely.
We're going to need, okay, we're going to need extensive EV stations on every floor. Then the third option for additional parking would be to put the parking structure in starting below grade. So you actually have a basement in the parking structure. I don't know what the water table is like there, so it may not be feasible. But if it is, you could go actually, for part of this parking garage, you could get some more spaces by going below grade, closer to where the units are. And that's, that's just a suggestion. I've lived with trying to design the perfect thing that would go in here, that would help our residents on Highview. And the only thing that I could see that I would ask for right now, if they're comfortable with the screening, and the heavy tree berm, and controlled lighting, and the ability to have and share some of these amenities, is if you will be offering, because you're bringing in sewer and water, if it's possible to offer it to those few homeowners who live there, that may have a septic failure in the near future because of the density that we're putting in here, or whatever, I would like to see them taken care of. They have been putting up with this constant disruption, not knowing whether they should fix their house up or not, for the last thirty years. And this triangle has been a burden on all of us. So I like the project. I like the finishing. I like the amenities that you're putting into it. While I don't like the density, because it's on Northwestern Highway, and it is a very commercial space right now, I don't think we have any other option. But this is not a residential area anymore. And, and I think we've all come to grips with that. And the Texas-style buildings that are going in right now, you've got the Sacoa Project, the town, or whatever, Townhouse, whatever they call it. You've got the Griffin and Royal Oak. There's some really high-density projects that are going into Ferndale and other parts of Royal Oak as well, and into Hazel Park. I think that for a community that wants to address and attract young people who are, don't want to buy yet, they're not married, or they are married and they don't have kids, they don't want to tie down themselves until they're ready to buy a house and have children and move out, this is the kind of dwelling they're looking for, as well as seniors who may want to live half-time in Florida and part-time here. They're, they don't want to buy anything either. They just want to be unfettered. That's the new kind of retirementality that's going on. And that's why the Covington Apartments that we have near Fourteen Mile Road are still so successful, even though they are very high-end and very expensive. It's because it attracts an older clientele that doesn't want to tie down permanent roots necessarily, but wants the amenities of luxury living. So I like this project. I just want to know if any of those things are, especially the EVs. And the detention basin, when you're talking about putting it underground, for those of you who don't know, there is an underground detention basin across the street at, at, at the commercial center that's across the street, near where the Gap was. So closest to Orchard Lake Road, that's, pavement is over an underground detention basin. And right here on the map, the water flow that I noticed for the storm does go right through that detention basin. So you could easily locate it underground if you want. But you could also, as I said, put in a half of below-grade floor of parking. I guess what I'm saying, I like this, I want to make sure our residents that live there are taken care of, that don't have to suffer any more extreme changes than they've already had to put up with.
Sure, sure. As far as, you know, the detention basin or an underground system, you are, you're restricted by, you, our outlet is going to be the drain that's on the southeast corner of the property.
Right.
That drain itself is encapsulated in a regular, in a regulated wetland. Our intent, and all the trees around there, our intent is to leave that area untouched. It's regulated, we don't want to impact it. If, if you, if you do impact that, then we would have to, it'd be, require us to go through a Eagle Permit with the State of Michigan. Our intent right now is to simply outlet into it and, you know, run with a conventional surface detention basin. If we were to vault the, say, you know, if we, underground or vaulted system underground, now that, that whole system is below where our outlet is. So you have to pump it up. And then you, you get concerns about if you, you know, a lot of times like, and I don't know the specifics you're mentioning, it is a very common thing to do on commercial projects, because commercial projects take up so much of a property, you don't want to eat up space for putting in a stormwater management system. So they put the systems under the parking lot. And they, a lot of times, they will outlet into the, the city storm system, or, and those pipes are lower in the ground than what we're, we're tasked with here. We only have about four feet of depth that we can outlet into in that drain. So putting a system underground might be a challenge for us. May, it will be a challenge for us. So we'd have to take a look at that. Regarding the utility extension, depending on, I don't want to get too technical, depending on, you know, the, the level or the depth of the sewer to get it down to your property, it's, it's one of the things we are talking about with city engineers. He does want us to extend utilities in all surrounding areas, and that's one of the areas we're taking a look at. So, you know, I'd be willing to say yes. If, if we can get this, you know, approved with, 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 you know, the density that we're asking for, and kind of the parking configuration we're asking for, absolutely every effort will be made to extend sewer down Highview or Greening. I think Greening would probably be the better option, because Highview, you have to cross the drain, and there's some conflicts there. But absolutely, it's something that we would, we would look at, because it's being requested of us from the city already.
Yeah, the Highview people have just lived through so many struggles over there. And then I wanted to make sure that Highview would be paved. And then I wanted to make sure that High View would be paved and the drainage would be improved on that road for those residents who have a tremendous dirt road, muddy mess. You certainly don't want that to look like that around a high-end apartment unit. So I'm assuming that it would be in your favor to clean that up quite a bit, because your residents are going to be walking down that street.
Our intent at this time is to pave High View down to our southern property line, which was one of the requirements. I was actually thinking about paving just, you know, the section of the road that our vehicles we know would be driving on. Paving it further to the south only encourages other cars and bypassing and everything else. But it's something that we can take a look at.
Not if you don't pave Ludden.
Right. Well, and so as you see right now, the dark gray, that's a symbol of the asphalt improvements that we're making. So we're already committed to paving High View down to our southern property line.
Okay. If you could go a little past Ludden, that would be nice, and not pave Ludden so that you don't get that cross-through traffic. So the cross-through would actually go up Mulford Inn to Greening or Rexwood to Greening. That would be preferred, and some kind of additional screening so that they can live in peaceful coexistence. Okay?
If that's something, from an engineering standpoint, I'd love to say, yes, we can do that right now. There's just, there's grading and drainage challenges and everything else when you go from dirt to asphalt. So it's something we have to look at, and it would be something that we'd look at in more detail at the next step, for sure.
Well, I'd like our public services team to look at that as well, because we do have a road millage, yes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I had a question that was right along, no pun intended, the same road as you're going down. So wanted to just ask the proponent, just, and I think you did, you clarified, the areas that are hatched in gray, the intent is that's the limits of the proposed road improvements. Is that correct?
Sort of, because the only area where it'll be different, what that represents right there is, on the west side of the property, you can see the hatched area stops at where the current road is paved. What I'm proposing now is, we haven't submitted a new set of plans, we didn't have to, we were told, don't revise and resubmit. So that is going from gravel to asphalt. What we are also going to propose is tearing out the remaining section of those two roads out to Orchard Lake and paving those as well.
Okay.
Now, our intent is to keep them in a rural section with the existing ditches. That's hopefully how we're going to handle everything.
Very good. Yeah, that's what I wanted to confirm. I appreciate that. I think that'll go a long way, and, you know, maybe providing some additional on-street parking as well. That's a possibility to help offset your parking issues. And just for council's edification as well, one of the other things that engineering is asking for is a detailed traffic impact study as part of their review. So they'll be looking at this pretty closely.
We have engaged a consultant, we'll be preparing a study as part of our next step.
Very good. Thank you. We appreciate your cooperation.
But if you could talk to the High View residents that are there and see how far they would like the paving extended, maybe with our millage dollars, that could kind of go in to help the entire project, get you sewer and water if you want to tap in, and really improve the property that you sit on now without harming you any more than you've been harmed during these past 25 years or so. I would really appreciate that. You're off of Northwestern Highway. It's not going to be detached condos that are going to sell this spot. So I appreciate the care and energy that you took into this, and that's really all I had to say. Dr. Bruce?
I'm just ready to make a motion.
Okay.
At this stage. Ready?
Are we ready for a motion?
I think so.
Yes.
I have a question. And I don't know if Dr. Bruce is willing to do this, but based on several of us having concerns with parking, would he be willing to put in his motion a requirement that, you know, if parking becomes a problem, that the developer has to work with the city to include parking on the other side of Greening Street at a minimum? And if parking issues are even more severe, that they have to look at adding another area of parking on their property to the south?
We're comfortable with that, yes.
Okay. And EV stations in the parking garage?
Okay. All right. So my motion is that I move that we approve the application for the PUD plan for 2021, dated October 18th, 2021, be granted, and further resolve that the city attorney prepare the appropriate PUD agreement stipulating the final PUD approval conditions and authorizing the identified zoning deviations for city council consideration and final approval, and also adding in the parking to Greening Street if
Additional parking if necessary.
is necessary, and if beyond that, then extending the parking lot, their parking lot, further on the southeast side of the development. And I think that was outlined in the planning commission's debate or discussion as well, if I'm correct in that, in terms of adding more to, extending your parking lot down further along the eastern
There was discussion about that, yes, as an option. I don't think it was a formal condition of their approval. I would rely on, but yes.
Then I would make that a formal condition of my
With EV stations?
Yeah, and I did say with EV stations, I believe, as well.
Extending High View?
And extending High View. Anything else? I do like the project. I like it a lot. I think this is what we really need for that area. I think that, I'm not that concerned about parking. I do think that it's going to be a lot of young, single people, maybe small, young families, or older people that move into this development. You know, we've been decrying in the city a long time about losing residents and closing our schools, because we don't have the population here to support that. And I think having young professionals in the city become young families, become homeowners.
We call them DINKs, dual income, no kids.
Yes, exactly. So I think that's all a positive. I'm not that concerned at all about the height. I think it's consistent with what's already around this development in a lot of different areas. The density doesn't bother me. I think we need more density in certain areas of the city, and I think this area is ripe for that kind of a thing. I'm not concerned, I think that these will be nice apartments for a long time. I don't think there's any way to hold a developer to what their project's going to look like 50 years from now. As far as being on this council for the last 17 years now, I don't recall us ever making that a point of discussion or a condition of any development going forward. There's no way to control that. I mean, that's where our ordinances come in, that's where our inspection programs come in down the road to hopefully take care of that kind of an issue. And to make their money back, they're going to have to stay, I think, nice for quite a long time for people to want to rent these apartments and to recoup their investment in this project. So I think it'll look very nice in this area. Otherwise, you know, that's an old piece of property, it's just in need of redevelopment all through that area. And so I'm very much in favor of this project, and that is my motion.
Support.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Bruce, seconded by Councilmember Boloware and Councilmember Bridges. Is this a regular vote or roll call?
Regular vote.
Regular vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it passes six to one. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Quick question for you. What are you going to have, what are you going to put shovels in the ground and get this going here?
Got to get the PUD done.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a few hurdles to jump through still, but yeah. I would assume the anticipated construction commences probably early 2024 if everything goes well. Wait, 20
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, excuse me.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay. Next item is unfinished business. Consideration of approval of the enactment of ordinance C-1-2022, amending the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, quote, Administration, end quote, Article Five, Employee Benefits to amend Section 2-360 to add a new subsection relating to reemployment of court employees and approval for summary and publication.
I know Mr. McJan had to step out for a moment. This ordinance is prepared for second reading. It's, oh, were you?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yes, Mr. Joppick.
I see Mr. Scrabola is here. I know that he worked on this with both
He gave us a lot of numbers this week.
Yes, so I'll
So I just have one brief comment. As Attorney Joppick mentioned, this is the second reading and passage that is being offered tonight. The clarification, the mayor asked a question as to whether the restrictions of 1,000 hours a year of work would be applicable to all of the court employees covered under this ordinance. Actually, I answered in the affirmative, I was incorrect in that, in that answer, and that the actual answer is that the current Section Four, which will become the new Section Five, has the prohibition, or the restriction, rather, of 1,000 hours of work a year and some other restrictions. Those restrictions apply to those retired rehirees who are not one of the members of a member of one of the employee groups listed currently under One, Section One, Two, and Three. And now, under the new ordinance amendment, the court employees would be covered under Section Four. So current Section Four becomes Section Five. Those restrictions would apply only to employees retired and rehired, but not, who are not members of one of the employee groups covered under those four sections. So yes, those restrictions apply, but only if you're not a member of one of those employee groups. So the construction, the language is each subsection is, must be satisfied, one of those subsections must be satisfied. The word "or" is in between each section, so just clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion, Mayor.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or discussion? No? Okay. Yes, we are ready for a motion.
Okay. I move that council approve the enactment of ordinance C-1-2022, amending the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Employee Benefits to amend Section 2-360 to add a new subsection relating to reemployment of court employees and approval of summary for publication.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Bridges, seconded by Councilmember Dr. Massey. Is this a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmembers Bridges?
Yes.
Newlin?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes. And now we are on to item number five, new business, consideration of approval of reappointments and appointments for various boards and commissions. The list will be kind of red. T.R. Carr has tendered his resignation from the commission, not yours, don't worry, Lou, from the Commission on Community Health, and we are adding two names for appointment to SEMCOG delegation. That includes Councilmember Boloware as the delegate and Councilmember Bridges as the alternate delegate. Dr. Massey?
Would you like me to make a motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, I'm going to start out with, to SEMCOG, the nomination would be for Councilwoman Boloware to be our designee and Councilman Bridges be the alternate. So, cut that one, because that's the only one that's not written down here, right? For the Brownfield redevelopment authority, Kurt Brower, Ed Gardner, Jackie Boloware, all for three-year terms to end 1 February 2025. For the Building Appeals Board, Frank Reed, three-year term ending 1 February 2025. Commission on Children, Youth, and Families, Sharon Snodgrass and Tammy Luddy, three-year terms to end February 1, 2025. Commission on Community Health, Andrea Anderson, Lakeisha Young, Bernard Hooper, three-year terms for Anderson and Young to end 1 February 2025, and Hooper is a three-year term for alternate to end on February 1, 2025. Committee to Increase Voter Participation, Rose Christoph, Karen Bartos, three-year terms to end on 1 February 2025. Corridor Improvement Authority, Kim Guzman, four-year term to end 1 February 2027. Economic Development Corporation, Fritz Beiermeister, for a six-year term to end 1 February 2028. Emergency Preparedness Commission, Keith Sanamatero, Dan Wecker, for three-year terms to end on 1 February 2025. Farmington Area Arts Commission, Cindy Carlton, Lindsay Hawkins, three-year terms to end 1 February 2025. Farmington Area Commission on Aging, Carl Christoph, Daniel Fantori and Colleen Irvin, three-year terms to end 1 February 2025. Farmington Hills Beautification Commission, somebody named Catherine Massey and Sherri Jones, three-year terms, 1 February 2025. Yes, I do know who that person is.
Farmington Community Library Board of Trustees, Ernie McClellan, four-year term to end 1 February 2026.
Fire Board of Appeals, Frank Reed, three-year term to end 1 February 2025. Historical Commission, Earl Boxdrescher and John Willard, three-year terms to end 1 February 2025. Historic District Commission, James Paulson, Ken Klemmer, Steve Olson, all for three-year terms to end 1 February 2025. Housing Rehabilitation Loan Board, John Goshorn, Tracy Clark and Samuel Ramsey III, two-year terms to end 1 February 2024. International Property Maintenance Board, Frank Reed, three-year term to end 1 February 2025. Parks Recreation Commission, Don Fritz and David Pruder, three-year terms to end 1 February 2025. Planning Commission, Joseph Mantey, three-year term to end February 1, 2025. Water Advisory Council, Tammy Gushard, Mike Poocher, Anthony Droughts, Erin Quittell, all for three-year terms to end on 1 February 20
Two-year terms.
Nope, she, sorry. Gushard and Poocher, three-year terms to end 1 February 2025, and Droughts and Quittell, two-year terms to end on 1 February 2024. Zoning Board of Appeals, Aza Mazoud and Dan Irvin, three-year terms to end 1 February 2025. In addition, Water Advisory Council, Katrina Kennedy, one-year term and on 1 February Children, Youth, and Families, Jeff Boyle, for a three-year term to end on 1 February 2025. Committee to Increase Voter Participation, Marjorie Wittenmore, for length of term, an unexpired term, ending 1 February 2025. And Ashley Riley, a three-year term to end on 1 February 2025. Emergency Preparedness Commission, Michael Sweeney, for, to complete an unexpired term, and his term would end on 1 February 2023. Tim Segrist, for a three-year term to end on 1 February 2025. Board of Review, Andrew X. Line, to complete an unexpired term, and his term would end 1 February 2025. Thomas Downs, three-year term as an alternate to end 1 February 2025. Thank.
I think that's it.
That's it.
That's it.
Wow.
More coming.
That's a motion, Mayor.
Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved
Oh, no, read it.
It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Noel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. And that now brings us to the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Dr. Bruce. We move to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we are now going to stand adjourned. Good night, Farmington Hills.